A little welcome cup of coffee. Didn't taste good at all.
Sometimes that's not the object.
Yeah, it was golden.
Call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the approval of minutes from our December 18th meeting. We have a motion. Let them as presented.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I read. We have the CSE and CPSE recommendations. Did anybody have any questions on them? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, here up to public comment. Happy New Year, everyone, is here. Would our students like to introduce themselves, please?
Would you?
Would you?
Would you like to? Phrasiology is important.
Hi, I'm Ty Robinson.
Lexi, all right. You're welcome. Does anybody have any public comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay. Lately, there has been a great deal of questions and concerns being posted on social media regarding the administrative leave of the superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
I know that you can't go into specifics about the case, but I was wondering if you could give us just a general explanation as to how the process works with regards to the investigation, if it will be gone, a timeframe, and if you expect that this situation will affect the budget at all and what the taxpayers can expect.
Um, I don't have a timeframe. We are following, along with the contract that is in place that we have with Mr. Clough. And in that process, there is a grievance process, so we have to go through arbitration. And we are actually have been assigned an arbitrator. So hopefully, everything will get moving more quickly right now. Once the arbitrator has been assigned, the dates for the hearing schedules will be, you know, set. And then, you know, but unfortunately, I can't give you a timeframe. You know, I know our attorney is working diligently to move it along quickly, but unfortunately, we don't have a timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions? Nope. All right, possible, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
A B budget. Do you anticipate that this will have an effect on the current, the budget that will be coming up this year?
Um, as of right now, we don't. But there are other impacts that could, you know, cause concern in the budget, you know, CSEs, CPSEs, things like that, you know, people moving into the districts. But as of right now, no, we don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, possible discussion items. We have the high school principal brochure.
Get down the pile here. So I think I sent you all a copy of the brochure. And my major concern, of course, is whether or not you have anything that you would like me to change and/or add or subtract from it. It's pretty packed as far as information. And what we tried to do was certainly put together an attractive trifold brochure that explained in general form the duties of the high school principal, what general expectations there would be. And I'll speak to some other parts of that in a minute when my report time comes. And to, you know, talk about the community of Walton and set some highlights with respect to that. Our idea is that on our calendar that we've been talking about is that we would begin to send these brochures around by the end of this week. This is actually at print right now. That's why I only have one copy and it's a stapled copy, but, so you're welcome to take a look at it. But I'm anticipating that we're going to get the brochures back to us tomorrow, Thursday for sure. And we're going to start mailing them out to superintendents of surrounding school districts. I'm talking about sending them out to the superintendents of all of the, of this BOCs, but also our neighboring BOCs. So that'll cover quite a large area. And we also are advertising in other venues as well. But I just want to give a final check on this. If everybody's okay with it, then we're on our way, as they say.
I thought it looked very good. Very good.
Well organized.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. PJ Harmer, our PR person and fellow who does all of our web work and everything, also worked diligently on this, and I want to give him credit for that. And I guess if it's okay, I'll just go right ahead and hand this piece out to you. This is, we are posting on our website a little statement about community forum. So, because we did talk about making sure that the public was involved in the high school principal search. So this is the verbiage. It hasn't gone out yet. It'll go out this week also. We post it, you know, the idea was make sure we're okay with the brochure, get that sent out. And at the end of this week, we're planning on posting this. And I don't have, I've got the date in here, but when I do my report, I'll say the exact date. But that's basically, it's an easy statement. We're asking folks to RSVP, to query, so we can just get an idea of how many folks are there, because if we need to print materials and get them ready, then we'll have enough. And we have a couple other little plans as far as making it a productive night as well. But, so.
Nice.
It for the moment, but I'll come back to this in a little bit.
And we have the 2019-20 calendar.
Yeah, the DCMO BOCs calendar, we as superintendents approved this calendar at our meeting last week. BOCs doesn't necessarily dictate our calendar, but we like to be in concert with that because obviously, if we're closed and BOCs not, then our kids aren't going and having their education and vice versa, you know? If they're open and we're not, same thing, or the other way around. Anyway, so this is a draft. I anticipate that this calendar is going to be accepted by the BOCs board, but what they haven't added is like their staff development days, that sort of thing. But in terms of vacation times, I'm thinking that this is pretty much set. Now, I know that I had sent to you another, a draft at an earlier time, so I'll just, I'll just bring up a couple pieces that on this calendar in November, this year, we had a full week off in November, just because of the way that the calendar lies for next year, 1920. Looking at the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, which is, I think, probably been more traditional in the past in a lot of places, but although I got to tell you, I kind of liked that week off this past year. And then the other, the only other really major shift from when I showed you an earlier draft of this is in April. And what that was is it was the 10th of April off, which is Good Friday, and then the vacation the following week. And the superintendents felt we should go the week earlier and flip it around the way that it is right now. And the reason for that primarily is because state testing starts. And what we didn't want to have was a situation where we had a week off vacation, which would have been done on the 17th, and then you come back on the 20th and you have one day before state testing starts. And we really felt that it was been better in the students' interest to have a little bit longer time prior to that testing beginning. So those are the only two major shifts in it, but as I say to you, this is a draft. And if you have any comments that you think I should take back to the BOCs with respect to the calendar, I'm happy to do that before they approve us, before their board approves it.
I like the concept of following, you know, BOCs calendar, you know, because I know we've run in the past where our students were not in attendance, you know, at BOCs because we were off here, or, you know, like you said, vice versa. So I do like following the BOCs calendar.
One of the issues that always comes up when I was at BOCs is, for example, you had some students who were involved in cosmetology program, and there are a couple other programs too, but cosmetology comes to my head at the moment, where they actually have to have by state regulation, a certain number of hours in the classroom doing certain types of work. And that has to be documented and certified. And if we're off when they're not and vice versa, then obviously, that is another, that's an opportunity to rob that time from those students. So I certainly advocate for being in concert with the, with the calendar.
You know what your graduation is in June 2020?
I think it's the 26th. I don't, but, oh, you guys, you guys went on Saturday. I'm sorry, 27th. Yeah. That's it for now.
All right. I don't believe we have any correspondence for 4A. We are up to presentations, technology updates. Mr. Robinson?
Good evening. We're a little late on this, but this is our 2017-2018 update. We're late because none of the projects actually started last year until about December. So this is about a one-year review of what happened last year. Most involves our smart bonds money and our yearly IPA. So the key focus areas were infrastructure, safety and disaster prevention and recovery. Those are actually two slides, but they co-mingle so well that I just threw them together. Any of the points could have went in either one of them. And classroom technology. So we'll jump right in. The first quarter of 2015, and I believe it was October of 2015, we had two separate entities come in and do a site survey of our school, basically to tell us where we were at. And I like to refer to these points because these are the points that we fix every year to we, you know, fix all the issues they found. So South Central RIC, which is the BT BOCs, came in and the recommended, recommended changes that they had that we addressed this year was that Walton may consider upgrading a VoIP system, but currently their network infrastructure is less than ideal. If you remember, two years ago, we basically ripped the entire network down from servers to wiring closets, which are right over here in the corner. And we put everything in brand new. We did it 100% ourselves. We did all the servers. We did all the wiring. We did all the switches. That's been addressed. So our infrastructure in that aspect, which actually the brains of our entire system, is solid for years to come. We shouldn't have to address it other than if an item or hardware item, device dies, we'll just replace it. But we're set in that aspect. They also said that with the introduction of voice-over IP systems, the use of reliable, expandable, managed UPS units at both IDF's and NOCs has become a matter of health and safety. An IDF is what you're looking at in the corner. That's what holds all the switches where all our wiring comes into. That actually, we run wires back to a main closet, which is our server room, which is a NOC. So what we did, well, and we'll get into that next. So they want us to add UPSs. It's basically a battery backup. The third point they had was a K1 wing hallway cabinet was located above a drop ceiling. So what you're looking at in the corner here was actually put up in a ceiling that nobody could access. It was done back in, I believe, the year of the flood here, 2006 or '07. Bunch of these closets were washed out. So how do we address that? Well, at the time, they just addressed it by putting it in the ceiling. So they wanted us to get that out of there. The other company we had was ECC, and they came in in October and they gave us a pretty good rundown of what we needed to do. You know, they suggested a VoIP phone system. They wanted the UPSs. At the time, or last year, actually, we had two different camera systems, one at Townsend, one here. One was analog, one was IP. Both of them were old. You couldn't see them off-site, many issues. So they suggested one unified IP system. We had no door access control, which are the card swipes. We need to know who's inside the building. They said the lockdown process should be automated. We should install panic buttons at all the administrative assistant desks and possibly the principals and other administrative offices. This is a unique one because, well, not really unique, most schools, if you need to trigger an emergency, someone on a radio calls the secretary. That secretary hangs up, picks up the paging phone, quickly makes a page and, you know, tells everyone what that emergency is. Several points of failure, slow, room for human error, to be quite frank. They also wanted us to install a bunch of digital signage, an IP network-based solution. So let's get into what we've done. It seems like a lot of issues there, but we had a little bit of funding this year, so things worked out. So last year, Christmas break, we hired a company named Firstlight, and they installed the Cisco VoIP phone system. It entailed, we installed actually 220 phones. We ran the cables. They came in, they installed four servers, which are actually hosted over at Townsend in Mike Snyder's, Mr. Snyder's server closet. We built the other four servers and put them here in our closet at the high school. I'll give the reason for that in a later slide. We had a failing paging system last year. It failed continuously. So we hired our company. They came in and put in a basic paging system because that's all we need. It was extremely cheap, but it utilized all the old wiring, and all we needed was a base unit. And we hooked that into our new emergency notification system, but more for that, more in regards to that in the future. We installed 26 of the advanced network devices at the middle school and high school. Those are those double-sided signs, LED signs that you see up in hallways. For the majority of the day, they provide the time and date, but we highly utilize those during our emergency broadcasts. That's a key device that we use when we're doing lockdowns, holding places and other emergencies such as those. We added additional 2920, 2930 switches to the closets that you see again in the corner of the room. We had five old ones that we hadn't replaced. We didn't have the funding for. We'll replace them this year. We continue to replace Cat 5 and Cat 6 cabling. We finished the removal of the switch closet in that K wing, and we ran all the cables directly from the server closet at Townsend directly to those classrooms. So safety and disaster prevention and recovery. I'm going to go more in depth with point number one here. I created a video. We'll show it in a couple weeks when I give my three-minute review. So we'll go more in depth, but we utilize something called Informcast, it's an emergency notification software that allows us to tie in the new phones with our legacy paging system, with our digital signs and all other devices that we have here through JavaScript and other types of coding, which is great. The Vigilon camera system, we actually did the majority of this work ourselves. Maintenance helped us run the cabling and install the cameras. So between those guys and us, we installed 70 new cameras. I think it's four new servers. But you can access it from home. We utilize them with the old cameras currently until we can replace those. And Day Automation installed door access control, which we had no part of. They 100% did that project. Server and emergency notification redundancy, this is a key one. So when Firstlight came in to do our VoIP phone system, they installed four new servers all on one device. They're called virtual servers. But to have redundancy, we installed them over at Townsend. Then I built clones of those and installed those here at the high school. We have a 10-gigabyte fiber line that connects the two schools. So by chance that line gets cut, our servers will work here, their servers will work there. Another key part of that is, say, our emergency notification server goes down at Townsend, it dies, let's say. The one here will provide service for both here and there. So our phones will continue to work, and most importantly, our emergency notification system will continue to work. And I actually tested this over the recent break. I cut the power. Our phones continue to work, and it lasted about 25 minutes, which isn't bad. I also cut the internet, which is, I still don't 100% understand how this works. Our new phone systems are voice-over internet. While I cut the internet, we could still make phone calls all throughout our building, all over to Townsend, and we could still make phones, phone calls outside of our district. Only too continuous, though. We have two hardwired copper lines into our gateway, so we can make two calls, two out and two in at either building. But that's important because if something happens, we still have access to the outside board. We security rate funding and purchased all the UPS backups that they wanted. So if you look at this closet right here, below it, you'll see two UPS units. That's what actually provides the extra 30 to 45 minutes per closet. Provides electricity to the switches. Switches allow us to make phone calls, use the internet, et cetera. We've formed nightly backups on all onsite servers. This is very important. Last year, we still utilized BOCs for the 28-day backup, but they only back up the data. So if one of these servers dies and goes down, we still have to build it. And to build it to the same specs that I originally built it to, it's an eight-to-16-hour job. Now we make clones of those every single night. So if a server goes down, we should be able to spin up that clone in less than an hour and be right back up and running, which is vital, I think. Also, air conditioning in the server rooms. Our server room here at Town, or at the high school, has probably $400,000 to $500,000 worth of equipment. And if it goes down, there's not a thing in this school that continues to work. No printing, no logging in, no phones. I mean, so that's a very important addition because it wasn't working last year. And I went to John Jackson. John Jackson immediately addressed it and got it fixed. It was 100 degrees in that room for, I don't know how long, but he addressed it, got it fixed, and that's very important, both cost-wise and emergency-wise. So classroom technology, we added 25 interactive ProWise panels, which is exactly what you're looking at. They're not as big as that one, but they're nice. 20 charging stations for Chromebooks and tablets. Those mostly went to Townsend. Every room over there has about five to 10 devices, and at the time, they would just kind of nicely stack them in a corner. Not ideal these, you just slide them in. They all have their charging cables in and they're charging. 10 Newman's document cameras, 360 Chromebooks. We installed, or purchased 36 IMAX for a new lab here, a Canon copier for the CSE room for Mr. Hoover. And we installed a Townsend audio and visual presentation over at the Townsend gymnasium. So that's quite a bit where the funding comes from. Well, we had Smart Schools money, which they ordered us about $1.2 million. So we used $227,000 for the classroom technology. By the way, these are either round, these are most likely rounded up a bit. Pretty close, though. Which covered all the Chromebooks, laptops, IMAX and ProWise boards were partial, some of them. We also paid for the high-tech security features, such as the camera system, the VoIP phones and the door access, for $520,000. That leaves us about $370,000 to $390,000. There's a little give-take there that we still need to address. We've heard generators spoken about and some other key items. So that's going to be something that we're going to start discussing, hopefully pretty soon. We also used the yearly IPA, which was $70,000, that helped us get 90 of the Chromebooks, 20 charging stations, five ProWis, document cameras, the Canon copier and the Townsend project. That number may seem a bit high for that. The Canon copier is $10,000. The audio project for Townsend was close to $20,000 to $25,000. So between two items there, that was half of the IPA. But I think, as Michael attest, it's a phenomenal addition, I feel like. And over here at the high school, we did the same project last year. Everyone here loves it, and it should last a very long time. So are there any questions? Because that's a lot of information.
Well, that's what, one of the things I was going to ask you. With technology, it changes so quickly. And we've used $770,000 of the 1.2. How soon are we going to be replacing Chromebooks and things like that? Or will?
I would like to use most of the rest of the money for the replacement plan, and that's how we had planned to, but plans do change. So with new people, we need to get new opinions. But ideally, a lot, half of that at least should be used for a replacement plan. I know when we sat down before, one of the ideas you had was a one-to-one program. We're close to that now. They're in carts right now. But if we'd like to move towards that, then we need to purchase more Chromebooks and have a replacement plan, a solid one, every three to five years. And that's where that money, if you were to ask me, should be targeted for. The switches have a lifetime warranty. The IPA, I'll share that information with you if I told you before. I have that planned out right to year 2024, I believe. And the server hardware is in that, the UPSs is in that. All the key items to keep our infrastructure able to support this are in the IPA out to 2024.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much. Additions to the agenda. We have one addition, correct?
We have one emergency appointment. It's a non-consent item, number 9E. And it would be Mr. Arnold, who was the current volunteer ski club advisor, expressed interest on finding someone else to take that over. And Jim Wood has volunteered. So this would be a volunteer advisor position for the rest of this school year, starting December 18th, first ski club. That would be Jim Wood.
All right. Excuse me. Okay, so our consent agenda, we have the financial report, which would be the internal audit. We have the approval, or actually, I'm sorry, the agreement for the use of the voting machines once again. And that will be for the use of two voting machines from Delaware County. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice now. We have unpaid leave of absence. Linda Whitaker, part-time cashier. We have personnel appointments. Luke Dunn to super, or substitute custodial worker. Kimberly Cooksey, substitute food service worker. And I believe that is it. Yes. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Don't make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we are up to new business, 9A. We have a few donations. A new easel and a few hundred professional markers to the Townsend Elementary School Art Program from Helping Hands Preschool in memory of the late John Caldwell, professional cartoonist. We have $50 from the Jeffrey Endress and Darlene Wollenberg to the Cody Endress Scholarship Fund. And book, Snowy Nap by Jan Breth, to the Townsend Elementary School for the middle, from the middle school student, Jordan Covey. We have a motion to accept those donations?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, 9B, we have the restructure department chair position. So this was, the chair position for special education was K through 12. Now it's being split within two positions. That'll be the special education UPK through 5 and special education 6 through 12. Are there any questions on that? Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. 9C, we have the appointment of William Prim as assistant building maintenance mechanic, David Lent as the acting director of physical education, 2018-19 school year, and Nathan Cutting as our science teacher. And that will be biology. Is that right? Do we have a motion to approve this?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have, um, 9D, the approval, oh, that's the stipend approval, I'm sorry, for, um, David Lent, the 2500 for Acting Director of Physical Education. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. And then we have 9E, the emergency appointment. James Wood replacing Taylor Arnold for the volunteer ski club advisor position. Do we have a motion to accept that? Don't make a motion. Second? All in favor? Aye. Posed? Carried. All right, and we are up to administrative remarks.
Which side do we start on this time? For the past, prior to vacation and, well, in the vacation and since vacation, I've been focusing on staff evaluations. Mr. Hoover and I have been collaborating on a template to make the process a little user-friendly for both sides of the equation and, uh, we're optimistic about seeing that in place. That preliminary, uh, approval from the building level, uh, unit representatives saw that, uh, that's satisfactory from a point of view in high school. And, uh, we're looking to move forward with all due haste to finish the first round of evaluations and progress from there.
I've talked with the, uh, the middle school, um, representatives from the union, they also agree that it's a good idea, so it's out of the next step to make sure the whole union's aware of. You know, it's, uh, we ended the school, the, uh, calendar year, you know, uh, doing some fun things in the middle school, ended the high school, you know, they had winter carnival and the afternoon, the day before break, all the, the seven, sixth, seventh, eighth grade teachers organized different activities, um, some movies and some games and different things to, uh, you know, get as much educating as you can that last day, which sometimes isn't that, isn't that much.
Hard to keep them focused.
Keep them focused. You know, we hit the ground running these, these few days since we've been back, so things are, things are going well.
And, um, to mention that, on the website, you know, over break, everything that was being put up, you know, with what the kids had accomplished, um, and looking back over the school year, they've done a lot. They have really been active, very active.
Got through the Christmas, uh, craziness right there before we went on vacation at Townsend, so, uh, that went really well. Um, we're back at it, we've only been, it's four days, but, uh, I told everyone I had to work a full week this week. Two days last, it was very nice. Um, but, uh, just making progress, uh, we've got some academic initiatives that we're, they're working through, um, which I'll, I'll have more to say as those come forward. And, uh, we're finishing up kind of final rehearsals for our show, it's, uh, the 19th.
January 19th.
January 19th, Saturday night.
And where do we get the tickets?
You can buy tickets at the Townsend office.
Townsend office, okay.
Call them, they can reserve them, then you can come by and get them, but we have, uh, we have ticket sales there.
Okay. And I seen on the website that, um, they had the handwashing stations.
Oh, yes.
For the elementary school. How is the sickness at that, you know, level? I know the older kids, you know, the tissues and stuff like that, but not so much the little kids.
I mean, we, we, we push hard for it. The DVH came in and did, uh, the handwashing station for grades K to two. And what they do is that, uh, you're supposed to go wash your hands and then they put, uh, you put this, uh, this fluorescent chemical on and you put your hands under a black light and it's a complete horror show. And, uh, to the little kids. So, then they, they have to go wash their hands again, better, and they come back and try to see if they got rid of all that, so it looks cleaner. And then we said, well, they wanted to come back, so we did that for grades three through five.
Oh, nice.
They, they do a better job overall, but it was, it's still fun to watch them. They think their hands are clean, they're like, oh, my God, what's on there? So, I really think, uh, DVH redoing that, that was great.
That is nice.
But we have, I mean, kids are diligent as they can be, but they're little kids, so they're, once, you know, the, the sicknesses will go around, they'll run their course. But we've, we've been fairly lucky.
Good, good.
Well, I have some, uh, great news, um, which was that we got our, um, Every Student Succeeds Act rating back from state. And for the very first time, well, first time apparently for a very long time, uh, all three schools are now in good standing and the district is in good standing, according to the state. So, we've kind of, um, you know, we're on a, we're on a roll. So, we're, we're definitely moving upwards and I just want to say thank you to all the teachers who really, you know, made a great effort. There are, we were, uh, we came out as, um, at level two, which were in the 10th to 50th percentile, and they, they won't tell us where we're in there, but at least we're not in the bottom, uh, 10th percentile as we have been in the past. Uh, so, that was, uh, that was great news on, uh, the accountability statement from, from the state.
That is. I think everybody worked really hard. That was nice. And I know you had mentioned, um, that, you know, when we were, um, a school in need, it, it provided professional development through this funding and of course, that will be dropped now and...
Well, I don't know because they, um, I think the money's been channeled now into a different title brand. So, um, this year, for the first year, um, I had to, um, kind of, uh, give accountability for a Title IV, which was a new brand that we were not entitled to before, but we were, and we got quite a substantial amount of money from, from that. So, for this year, and possibly the last year, I think, uh, we've got, um, a lot of money from the old title brand for being a focus school. But I think, um, in the future, the Title IV brand will continue and we'll get the money that way for professional development. So, I really hope so because the professional development that we have this year, um, is really, you know, very high quality and I really want to keep going with that because it's not something that you start and then stop. It's got to, we've got to follow through.
Nice. Well, I know everybody had to go through a lot with that and, you know, all the requirements that had to be met, and I think they did a very nice job and being in good standings proved how hard everybody had to work to get there and, nice. Very nice. Tim, say something?
Um, I think we mentioned last time, the, when we started to get together and do the budget stuff, um, it's a very short word, but it's a very long process, so that'll be, will consume you probably for the next three or four months.
Give you something to do, right?
It's always hard because you think to yourself, what have I done? I could tell you what I did today, but I don't, you know, you're always going to start falling asleep because I'm not all that excited, money stuff will have to be done.
Well, thank you for that, anyway. Somebody has to, I'm glad you...
Me, too. So, um, update on our immunization compliance, we talked about that last month, having some students who are out of compliance, we're now 100% in compliance. So, uh, we had a lot of great cooperation from parents and, uh, it was, uh, everybody rose to the occasion, so, uh, we certainly thank them for that. Uh, high school principal, I showed you the brochure and the, uh, the little announcement, basically, that'll be up on the web. That's going to run from, I didn't put that on this, but it's going to, we're planning on it running from January 10th to January 25th on the web. And, and we have, uh, with the community forum on the, uh, 31st. So, that gives us a couple of days to gather data and, you know, put everything together so that we can share it with everybody, which is our, our intent. Speaking of budget, I had shown you earlier, a, um, at an earlier meeting, uh, earlier session, a pre-budget community survey that, uh, we want to put up on the web. And, uh, our intention at this point is, and I've got extra copies here if you want to see it, I haven't changed it substantially, maybe, you know, shortened up a word or two and that sort of thing, but that's about it. But our intention is to, uh, have that listed on the web for folks, like, like a survey monkey thing, um, from January 22nd to February 8th. So, that's a three-week period for folks to get that out. I didn't want to confuse it with the high school thing either, so, you know, we've sort of got two different windows there. And, um, with the community forum being on the 12th, and again, that gives us between the 8th and the 12th to muster our numbers and get that, so we can share that with, with folks as well. So, trying to be transparent on the front end of it before we actually present you with, um, some numbers, you know, it's nice to be able to say, you know, this is what our community says about some things and that sort of stuff. But again, if, and we haven't put that up yet, so if you want to take a second look at it or take a copy of this home and take a look at it, if you think we'd miss something that really, you know, needs, should be on here for the community, please, please let us know so that we can, we can, we can do what we, we should be doing. You just approved, uh, Mr. Cutting as the science person. Uh, I have to thank, um, members of the science department, staff and, uh, and WTA for, um, basically filling in and taking, uh, on some of the, uh, the labs, uh, in the, in the interim. We didn't know how, well, how long this process was going to be before we got someone to fill the position, as it turns out, it was a pretty short process. Um, and, uh, we feel we have a ver, a very qualified individual. He actually is, um, has been working at GMU and, uh, is coming in this direction for various reasons. Actually, his family lives, I think, over in Afton and that sort of thing, so, um, but, uh, staff have helped us out, uh, with regard to, uh, covering for some of the labs, uh, scoring those labs, uh, and that sort of thing. It hasn't been, um, one staff person having to cover two different classrooms at the same time. Typically, what's happened is those students who are over there come into that classroom, maybe are in the back of the room working on their labs while, uh, the class is going on. We have had some of that double, that kind of doubling going on, but it hasn't been a, a safety issue or that sort of thing, so. DCMO, uh, draft calendar I showed you, and then I, I would, um, also mention to you that Legislative Breakfast, DCMO sponsors a legislative breakfast for, uh, our BOSIs area. Just a reminder, it's scheduled for Saturday, February 2nd at the Silo, starting at, uh, Silo Restaurant in Green, starting at 9:30 a.m. It's $25 a person, but if we can get five of us to go, we get a six slot for free, right? And we would like you to, uh, let us know, and I'm, uh, Cliff Crouch is almost always there. This might be an opportunity for us to meet Jen Metzger, our, our new, uh, state senator. I would assume that she'll be there. Uh, we've sent all the stuff out for them and everything. Uh, I assume that Jim Seward will be there and, uh, not sure about Fred Akshar, but he might, he might be there as well. So, um, deadline, uh, we're asking for you to let us know no later than January 17th, if you would like to come. I know I'm planning on going and, uh, you know, I'll just drive over from my place and meet everybody there. And then the other piece is that the, uh, NISBA has published their capital conference, which is their lobbying weekend for school board folks. If you're interested in that, that's February 10th and 11th. Um, and, uh, you know, it is an opportunity to go up and meet, if, if, if we have people who we don't see at the Legislative Breakfast, it might be a good idea for us to go up and sometimes it's a good idea just to go up, to hit them twice, um, and so that they get to know our faces as well. Um, so, uh, that's scheduled for February 10th and 11th, as I said, and we're asking, uh, Deadline to let us know if you're interested in going, uh, by January 25th. So, I think that's all of them, right, Corey? And then, uh, I would ask that we have a, uh, what I expect to be a brief, uh, executive session, um, to, uh, talk about negotiations and, uh, a specific staff person.
All right, and then I just need to add a matter, um, under attorney, um, client privilege as well.
That's it for me.
Do we have a motion for executive session?
I'll make that motion, or I'll second it.
All in favor?
Greg can have it.